Now we're on air. We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. It's time to do that. And if you'd stand with me for the flag salute, I'd appreciate it. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing. I don't think we, I couldn't get a hold of the preacher this morning, so I'll just open in prayer for us. Father, we come before you this morning. Thank you for the gathering of the folks that are here to support and to advise. And Lord, we thank you for the two new members to this board. We pray that, that they would just assimilate. We'd have great discussions in the coming years and, and debates. And the outcomes would be what you would be honored by. And certainly we would honor those that put us here in this office. Lord, we just pray for your, your protection every day. We thank you for a peaceful transition in Washington DC. Lord, we just pray that, that the leaders would just be mindful of you and everything that they do. Lord, just thank you for those, like I said, in attendance here this morning. We just pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. Well, welcome, welcome to the new commissioners. Thank you for being here. I, I say that because maybe in a couple of weeks you'll say, whoa, I didn't know this is what it was gonna be. But, but we got a pretty light agenda today, but I'm sure that that will pick up throughout the course of the year. And so, but anyway, thank you for being here. Any one here this morning, well, I guess we're ahead of that. It's after the public comments, after the next tour of business. So appointments of the chairperson and vice chair for 2025. We'll open that for nominations at this time.
I would move to nominate Commissioner Vice Chair, Don Bogner. Second.
Any other comments? That was for?
Chairman.
For chairman, okay. Any other nominations? Not, we'll take a vote on that. Cindy?
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Can you vote for yourself?
I read the rules. Our attorney said this.
All right, well, we'll open it for an appointment for vice chair. Any nominations? I'm gonna nominate Ron Hurst. Do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Bogner. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Hurst?
I abstain.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. I want to thank you very much for serving as chair this past year.
Yes.
And I appreciate everything you've done and the professionalism that you've done it at.
I appreciate that, thank you. Do we need to switch places now? I'm okay with that. Takes heat off me. Go back to my original spot.
I think, like, all it is is something like that. I'm gonna take my water. I did wrong, I was. All right. Would you mind sharing that? I'd like to have a ripped copy when I'm done. You can have it. Thank you, sir. All right. At this point, is there anybody in the audience who has public comment on items not on the agenda? Want to speak?
Can I just tell everyone, thank you for all you do for us all year long?
Well, thank you, we appreciate that. Anita? Nice to hear. Thank you so much. Item six. We need to, are there any additions or revisions to the, to the agenda at this point? Anybody have anything? Seeing and hearing none. I would say we're up for item seven, the consent agenda. I would. I would honor a motion to, at this point, if somebody's so inclined.
I'll motion we accept a consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
It's been, motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. Moving on to the business items in section eight. We have eight A, the Register of Deeds Annual Report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, since we have two new commissioners here, I thought I would just introduce myself again. I know we've all met, but my name is Michelle Updugrove. I'm the Register of Deeds for Reno County. And I have worked here for, gosh, 12 years almost. I've been the Register of Deeds now for eight years. This is my third term. I was born and raised here in Hutchinson, Kansas. I started out here in the appraiser's office and moved to the Register of Deeds. And I have three lovely staff members, Nikki Neese, my deputy, Dana Eldridge, my real estate associate, and Madeline Prather, my digital records preservation associate. What we do in our office is primarily, yes, recording property documents. We also maintain records. We certify copies of those documents. We ensure legal compliance on a lot of the property documents that we take. And managing real estate transactions. We work pretty closely with title companies, attorneys, and other real estate professionals. In essence, we help ensure transparency in the proper legal documentation of property ownership and any related transactions here in the county. It's really important to record property records. You're establishing public notice to, if there's any ownership or interest in, in real property. It ensures anyone with an interest in the property, such as potential buyers, lenders, can find out about existing claims or liens. It protects the owner's real estate, it protects their legal rights in the ownership of the property. Ensuring priority of claims. There's a statute, KSA 58221, 2221. When we get, receive a document, we have to record it immediately. If we don't, we could alter the priority and position of liens that are filed in our office. We also play a part in clarifying boundary rights. We are a supporting role in tax assessment and accountability. We're kind of that point A. The appraiser's office uses the documents that are recorded in our office to assess the taxes accurately. And more importantly, we ensure that documentation is essential for legal clarity, financial stability, protection from fraud. Without it, there'd be a significant risk and uncertainty in property transactions. We're very proud about what we do. What makes us really successful in our work is staffed adequately. Like I said, there's that statute, when we get a document, we have to record it that day, that time. In fact, it's a statute on the stamp, you have to have the day and the time that's on there. We can't record it when we have time, can't record it tomorrow. We have to record it at that time. E-recording has really improved that. When people e-record with us, it allows them to submit a document and in minutes we can accept it or reject it, and it goes back. We're not dealing with the delay of mail and delaying that property transaction for the buyers. It's an instant transaction. Something the public's really asked for, so we, we've been doing it now for the last three years. It's been working great. And we will continue to use that. Another part is staff being well-trained. We have to constantly be in the know of any statutory changes, technology advances. Things are changing all the time up in Topeka, as you know. We have to make sure that we're always in compliant of that. And a big part of our success is what we call LRMS. That's Land Records Management Software. We will be starting a new land records management software in February. We go live on the 17th. It's called Enterprise Records Management. It's with Tyler Technologies. It's gonna be a much more robust software. It's going to allow our customers to do more self-service. In addition to a lot of real estate documents that we record, we also record oil and gas. We have a lot of researchers that aren't from here. They come from Texas, Oklahoma, Missouri. And because our records aren't published online, they have to drive to our county, visit our records during our office hours, and research during that time. A lot of offices around the country are moving towards digitization, where we're digitizing all the records and we're publishing them online. Those customers can access those records through a subscription service. This is gonna introduce a new revenue stream to the county. People come in and research our records, they pay us a dollar per page in copies. We make some money off of that, not much. It pays for the toner and the printer. But that money that we take in doesn't pay for maintenance of software. What I project with publishing the records online is we will be able to build enough revenue stream to pay for this new maintenance, to pay for this new software, the annual maintenance agreement. So the software will essentially pay for itself in just offering the functions that it does. One of the main reasons that's gonna be successful is the digitizing project that we have now. We have a lot of documents scanned. In fact, I'd say, gosh, I don't know, 90% maybe is maybe overshooting it, are scanned, but they're not indexed. What is, what allows a researcher to view our documents as being, is searching it by the information, the data points that are connected to that document. Right now, majority of our records can only be searched by book number and page number. Well, right now, you can only get book number and page number if you come into our office and look at our handwritten ledgers that are in our office. Because that's the only data key that is connected to those documents. We need to be adding buyer name, seller name, recording date, and legal description in order for researchers to really find these documents with the information that they have. And we do not have the capacity to do that in-house and get it done soon. What I'm proposing is that we hire a third-party company to do the digitizing services. The tech fund money was given to us for this, these kind of expenses. It goes into preserving records and maintaining records. I'm still in the process of getting quotes from places like US Imaging, Salina Blue. They will basically come on-site, take the records that we have, and just index them. It is a team, is, company is designed to digitize records. They know how to read real estate records from today and from 150 years ago. They apply all the information that is needed for the indexing information, and they do it through a quality check system. It's a three-tier system, where they have people indexing the information, they have another team checking the information, and then another team verifying that everything's right before it's released to us. If there's any issues going on, that we find with the records, we send it back and they take care of it. So the accountability and the liability is on the third-party company. If we were to do it in-house, it would be one person that I have that works 19 hours a week looking at hundreds and thousands of documents every day and indexing information. There would be no one checking her work, so the issue of having any errors is a lot bigger. The window of a lot of errors is a lot bigger. And again, we have tech fund money that's supposed to be used for services like this. I think we should be using it for that. And once we get all those documents digitized, we can release them to the public, and they would have a much more broad access to our records. Right now, everything that's searchable for them only goes back to the early 90s. To do afar, a lot of the times when researchers have to do a full search, a full-scale search, they have to go all the way back to patent, which is when the United States government owned the property, which could be hundreds, 100 years ago. That information, they can't do a full search with what is digitized now. They'd have to come in, so. In order to get that revenue stream that we need, we really need to finish this digitizing project. And other aspects that are relying on the digitizing project being completed is also the space issues that we're having at the annex. The treasurer's office does not have room to grow. They need some extra space. We would love to help them with that, because if we can get everything digitized, then we don't need to have the books on-site, right? We can store those in underground vaults and storage. Again, that's an expense for tech fund money. Doesn't have to come out of the general fund. And we would be able to give some of that space to the treasurers if they need it. And again, that can't happen until everything's digitized. So I would really, it's a personal goal to me to get the digitizing project done. Hopefully by the end of this year, that's really ambitious, but I would love to see that happen. That's gonna be my goal this year. I also will be proposing to have a full-time employee to help with the digitizing project. As I said, right now, we have a 19-hour-per-week gal. It's just not enough time. We've been pulling her from the digitizing to help with customer service and to help with tasks that we have to get done in the Register of Deeds office. Like I said, when we get a document, we have to put it on. We can't wait. If they come in at 4:45, we put it on. They come in 4:55, we gotta boot the computer back up and put it on. So. And when you have one person gone in our office, that reduces our staff, our manpower down pretty, pretty big. We're only four, including me. So, and as I said, our fourth person's only here four hours a day. I think a full-time person will help get us where we need to be with the digitizing project and also offer that extra hands of support that we need with indexing the records and helping customers in the office. We get genealogists, we get landmen researching oil and gas, we get realtors, and we get title companies. And if they've never been to our office, we've got to stop what we're doing, show them how the software works, show them where all the books are, help them with copies and any questions that they have. And that's because that's our job, being an open office like that. So. With that said, we do have some upcoming events coming up. Tomorrow is what we do, what we call Coffee at the Capitol. The Register of Deeds Association goes to Topeka, and it's all part of Local Government Day. We serve coffee to our local legislators and leaders. I won't be attending that, but obviously, with me being here, but. Property Records Industry Association, we are, Register of Deeds is affiliate of that. They contribute a lot of our continuing education, those statutory changes, technical advances that are coming up that other states are using. PRIAs really contribute to us in that regard. We, I, we're also South Central District Register of Deeds Association. I used to serve on the board for that. We have two meetings a year. Our Register of Deeds Association has a June conference, and anyway, those dates are listed there. I don't travel to all of them, but if there's a symposium that I can see online, I'll go to that. I don't know if any of you have ever been to I, any IGO conferences. It's International Association of Government Officials. A lot of the times, they have conferences that are just way too far for me to travel, like New York or South Carolina. Well, this year, they are in Kansas City, June 20th through the 24th. Their eighth annual association is actually in Kansas City. I've gone to one of their conferences in Houston before, they're really great. I'd really recommend, if anyone's interested, to go to that. Maybe we can carpool. Other than that, that concludes my report. Is there any questions or comments?
I have a question, Michelle. Do you think with the digital, digital format, I, I can see it and I know it's, it's coming, and, and I see the benefits. But do you think it would be easier for frauds to happen than it is currently with the digital? Because anybody can get on and sign in. We, we had a problem in the eastern part of the county here a few years ago, where a group came in and falsely claimed a bunch of mineral rights. Took a little bit of money with the lawyer to.
Yeah.
Clear that out. I realize, am I thinking right? You don't have any discretion over what you record. If it's brought to you for recording, you must record it, whether it's a legal or a fraud deal.
Correct. I don't really have too much discretion on what I can record or what I can't. Unfortunately, the statute doesn't allow me to pick and choose what I can and can't record. What's a scary truth is someone could bring in a deed from my own house and present it to me, and if everything on there is legally what it needs to have on there, I have to record it. I'd get in more trouble if I didn't.
That's what happened with these mineral rights.
Right. Because real estate records are public record, whether they're online or in our office, they're going to be accessed regardless. I will say, we can't take any deeds that aren't in the correct format. We don't release what that information is. We don't help anyone fill out a deed out at the counter. You know, a deed has to have certain things in order for it to be recorded. They have to have a notary. I check the notaries to make sure they're current. I check the land descriptions to make sure they're correct. If one thing seems a little out of bounds, I will bring up caution with whoever's trying to file it. That's all I can do. It's a terrible crime, because. It's a terrible crime, because anyone is, is vulnerable to it. And once it happens, it's, it becomes a financial burden for the victims to get back what they have. I will say with our new software, there's gonna be a program in there called Property Fraud Alert. So what that does is they sign up with their email. They put in their information and like their name, the legal description. And anything that we record in that system, if has their name or legal description in it, they'll get a notification. A deed has been filed using your name or your legal description. They'll have contact information to call us if this seems unfamiliar to them. We'll release the document that was recorded. Unfortunately, the damage has been done. At that point, we recorded it, but they're aware of it. They can make, they can start taking steps to challenge that document.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
And that, that would be a real step forward. Because in our case, we wouldn't have knew a thing about it.
Right.
Had a neighbor not sold a piece of his property to a, a lot off to, to a church member.
That's right.
And, and when it came up, he saw our name on it and he called me. He knew me. He says, hey, guys, you're, you're involved in what I've discovered. Where with you sending that, that would tell me right away that, yeah, I did that last week. Fine. If not, I need to get ahold of my lawyer and get to walking and get going soon. That, that to me is worth a whole lot. Because that's happened in two different times to me in my lifetime.
I completely agree with you. The longer the property is under the criminal's name, the more damage can be done to that property, as far as filing false liens, using it as collateral to get money loans. You know, it's, it's terrible.
I'm, I'm glad we're moving in that direction.
Property record industry is definitely aware of the rising incidences with, with real estate fraud. They tend to happen more in urban areas where there's a lot of property that probably looks abandoned, isn't really being watched, you know? You find a lot of that in, in bigger areas. Take Wichita, for example. Joyland was a victim of that. I have not personally been aware of many here in Reno County, any, any fraud, real estate fraud actions being done here, knock on wood.
Well, if you had one, it got solved.
That's right. Yeah.
Can you imagine signing up for this?
Yes.
How?
So we will do a promotion. We'll be advocating for Property Fraud Alert when we go live with it. I would like to have a drive where we'll be set up and people can come and we can give information about it. We can get a lot of people signed up that way. I think that would be better than having drones of people come into our office wanting to do it all at once. We'll be advocating for it throughout the year. We'll be making sure opportunities are advertised for the public to sign up. We have to get creative about how we do that. I don't want to spend too much money on mail, sending mailers out or anything like that. But we're gonna do our best to put the word out.
So it's available now?
It's not available right now, but it will be available when we go live with the software, which will be February 17th.
Well, if there are no other questions, then, all right. A few years ago, a company was contracted to provide some digitizing, if I remember right. And that did not work good at all. And so what safety factors did you learn from that that you could put in if you're looking at another company? I believe that company was here in Kansas, too.
Right. So.
I guess what did you learn and how are you applying it, okay? From that instance?
Yeah. Great question. Well, what I learned is, from that situation, is I need to do one thing at a time. When I started that inquiry with the digitizing company, we were in between imaging softwares. So when we had one imaging software that required all the documents to come in through one way, meaning like a certain file type, to be, come in through a disk or external hard drive, it required certain needs for that integration to happen. By the time they got done with it, we had moved to a different imaging software that needed different needs. So I can't really explain too much as to what happened, as to why Salina Blues didn't work. But we also noticed that a lot of the page numbers weren't matching up to the image. You know, what I learned was, I want to pick a company that has a very good quality check and verification. I want to work really closely with IT and making sure that those needs are met. I don't want to be more involved with the process, because I'm the one that can verify if the information is matching up to the document. IT is gonna be the one to verify the information can be integrated correctly. It's a team effort. And unfortunately, I think there were just some things that slipped through the cracks on my end and maybe on even the digitizing company's end. Maybe it was a lack of communication. But those are definitely things I'll, I have learned to make sure are better and
Anybody else? Randy?
Commissioners, I just want, if the county was to move forward with this, it'd go through a process, but I would, at the end, it would still be the approval of the county commission, whether to move forward with the third party. So I would recommend that Michelle get with IT and there's Cory and Tim. Or IT, Cory's been doing the digital records up to this point, or it still is. And Tim's the director, but they may have other ideas. But I think Michelle would definitely need to work with them very closely and have IT kind of lead some of the discussion also. So that if, if it's brought back and you guys approve, even though it may be tech funds from the Register of Deeds Act, it's done. So that what happened however many years ago does not happen again. If the county commission wants to move forward with this process. But, so that would be my recommendation, is for them to work together and come back with a proposal in the near future, sometime this year.
And to add to that, the third-party digitizing company would not be imaging our documents. They would just be indexing them. All the imaging has been done through IT in-house.
And our personal people.
And that's really where the issue was three years ago. It was the imaging matching up with the indexing, the very little indexing that the digitizing company was allowed to do. And that will definitely affect the cost. If we were having them image everything, index everything, and convert everything into our software, you're talking a lot of money. We are providing them the images. We will do the conversion ourselves. We just need the data input by the digitizing company.
I think Randy makes a very good point. We done, guys? Any questions? Well, thank you. And I appreciate it. And I do appreciate the fact that what I've noticed over the years is our departments work well together with each other. It saves the county a lot of money, a lot more than the general public realizes.
IT has been very amazing to work with and they play a huge part in our success with the digitizing project. And they've been wonderful.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Item 8B. Annual Report for Department of Aging and Public Transportation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Candice Bonnison, Director for the Department of Aging and Transportation. As you know, I am a fairly new director. Been here almost exactly seven months. So I'm excited and happy to be here, working with everybody and getting to know the systems and working with the county. I have to admit that my staff has been generous and very warm, welcoming and assistive through these processes. So I want to send out a kudos to everybody that may be watching at this time. So on to our Department of Aging Annual Report. So our department, if you are not aware of, is a centralized source of information for assistance, providing outreach and referrals to older adults 60 and older, their caregivers that support them, and ongoing advocacy for older adults. The department itself was garnered in by Reno County citizens to support the older adults. Because they knew importance of it. They knew that the Older Americans Act, which was also initiated during the time of the beginning of the Reno County Department on Aging, has a huge impact on the services that are provided to individuals as we age. And we'd like to have them age in place. That in and ourself is our goal and our mission to hope and keep individuals as independent for as long as they can and in their homes for as long as we can. Over the years, we've adopted and gone through multiple programs. We constantly seek out all of the new programs that may be available, best practices. Information, especially when it comes to Medicare and changes to prescription enrollments. That's an every-year ongoing consideration and the support that we provide to older adults for their prescription coverages. We work with Healthy Active Aging. We do a lot of promotions. And this year is not, is gonna be just as exciting and health-related promotional and participation. We want to get our name out there. It's surprising how many individuals really do not know that we are available for assistance to older adults 60 and, 60 and older. Our department is funded by a mill that was voted in by the citizens of Reno County. And that supports our ongoing supplemental of budgets for staffing and our mill levy appropriations to local organizations that provide unduplicated services to adults 60 and older and their caregivers as assistants. And our agencies fund also our senior centers that are in every part of this county. We have nine that are currently really active. And our supplemental helps them garner, whether it's activities they do, some support with their meal sites for nutrition. It also helps with all the little things that they might need for the seniors to have a place to attend and thrive, socialize, being a big part of that, and finding out information that they might not have been privy to. A lot of the programs we also assist with is like the LEAP programs. We provide their applications to let them know how to apply for home energy coverage to assist with bills if they are unable to. And then we work with many multiple entities in our communities, along with like interfaith housing, the, of course, Volunteer Center based out of the Hutchinson Community College for the RSVP volunteer programs. And some of those individuals assist us by assisting with the Medicare Part D enrollment process. Going over that piece of it, this year alone, we provided over 3,000 unduplicated assistance and to older adults, their caregivers and walk-ins. A lot of outreach goes on here more recently with our Outreach and Information Coordinator. And so we're here to support pretty much any and everybody that wants to seek knowledge of availability of referrals and/or services that we can help them with. We keep abreast of all of the community goings-ons for older adults. And then also, we have our Aging Advisory Council that comes along with it, that helps advise of what they're seeing in the community. We also elect a silver-haired legislature individual that serves for our Reno County area and goes to the legislature and hears about the topics for older adults and the Older Americans Act, as well as the Senior Care Act, which is the Kansas State-funded programs. as we provide that and, and our knowledge of the Reno County population currently, and this is based on the 2023 population recording, we have a population of 28% of persons that are 60 and older. As we get to ages, we don't know of the services or the requirements that kind of come with those. And one of those major things is when you become 65, you automatically start to go into the Medicare system. And there's a lot of individuals that are not familiar with that process. And so it's for us to be able to help them navigate through all of those changes and opportunities for them. And so we hope that we're always able to garner the empathy and that they can trust in us of what they may be going through. Again, it's one of those things where we, as our mission, is to be sure that we can help maintain somebody's independence in being still in their home. For us, as a Reno County piece, it helps your economic baseline, too. So if they're home, they're also supporting the community in Reno County as a whole. So that is our basis for the Department of Aging. Any questions on that? Well, we'll move on to our moving and grooving with our transportation program. This in itself began as a Department on Aging program. And it was for older adults that were 60-plus, providing them some transportation to medical and grocery, little outings here and there, which eventually grew. And then the Reno citizens as a whole had an interest in transportation and requested that there be something for everybody to utilize for our community. So over time, with additional grants that we were able to allocate or obtain through KDOT and that coordination and cooperation with the state and then federal funds that help supplement the operations and capital of our program, we've been able to provide transportation in all of Reno County. We have a county service that can go out to an individual's place and bring them in for services. And then we also have a fixed route that runs every hour on the hour throughout the town. And there's four routes. In this last year, we provided over 75,000 trips to individuals, of which 34% of those were older adults. And 23% of those were persons with disabilities. By and large, that leaves almost half of those other individuals that are our general public, ages zero and up. So we are happy to be here, to be able to do what we do, providing services for individuals to get them to where they need to go. And we are also excited, as the year's coming up, we have, every year, we have something that we want to work with, with our fleet. So we usually have capital. So we usually have capital going in and out of our fleet. And so this last year, we were surprised by obtaining six vehicles at one time that were literally awarded in previous three fiscal years by the state. So, and that all extended from the pandemic's trickle-down situation and on-demand needs for vehicles. So we were able and lucky to obtain those, first of all, through those grants. And secondly, we did get them finally into our fleet so we could age out some of our older fleet that had very high mileage and were age-wise old. And so that minimized now in this year for some of those maintenance costs that we were also looking at as things age in our fleet. This year, we anticipate receiving two low-floor vehicles, so we'll be excited when those do come in in late spring, early summer. They are a low-floor type of vehicle that will actually be like a very little, if any, step as you go into a vehicle. And then also persons that use mobile devices and/or walkers can easily step into and onto this vehicle. And so we're looking forward to see how those work with our fleet. We were fortunate to obtain a grant that would seek those types of vehicles. They would be the first type of vehicle in the state of Kansas when they do come in, so we'll be excited to promote that information or have that out there for us to be able to ride perhaps one day. Any and every one of you guys might have an opportunity to ride with RCAT just to see what our services are like and what everybody else works to and why they utilize the services. I've rode a few times, talked to individuals. They talk about, they get to know the drivers. They talk about the reliability. So we've been very fortunate to have that garnered relationship with the citizens of Reno County. And we do have a facility that we keep our vehicles at. It's our bus barn and our transfer station. So we have a facility in which we also will be looking at upkeep and things that go on with those that we will be applying for as we need to for capital improvement plans, seeking grants as available by federal dollars because it is a part of a federally funded building. We are, together with the Department on Aging, so we are housed out of the same facilities, but one portion is Reno County, and the other portions are then the RCAT program, which is the Reno County Area Transit. We also have a very collaborative working relationship with automotive. They also have an extension on that building to where they perform all of the light-duty services for our fleet, along with the Department for Other Areas in County. And so having them at where we are has been a huge benefit. And truly, we appreciate all that they have done for our fleets over the year. So. Our service hours are Monday through Friday, eight to five. And then on Saturday, we have a demand-response service that runs from nine to two, which means that our fixed route's not running, but we have buses. You can call in and go anywhere as you want to as a direct service on demand, and that pretty much is available to anyone. It's not just persons that have a disability or have the need for some direct access or assistance, but for us to be able to provide it for any and everybody that's in the general public seeking transportation and that needs it. So is there anything or any questions anybody might have in regards to what we do with the aging or in public transportation programs?
Any questions? Well, seen no questions.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Moving on to Item HC. Recommendation from Randy on a possible internship.
Commissioners, thank you. In front of you, in the packet is pretty much the explanation of this. It'd be a public management internship program that would be jointly funded and operated between Reno County and the City of Hutchinson. In conversations with the city manager, we thought it'd be a good idea to work on something jointly. What this position would do, it would be a temporary position. It'd be probably June first through May, June through May. And each year, it would change people. If we continued, it would start a program where we would have this. Overall cost would probably be forty, forty-five thousand dollars, plus some benefits that would then be split fifty-fifty between the county and city. We would get a full-time employee during that time that is either a recent graduate of a Master's of Public Administration program. And the state of Kansas has three universities that have that program, and then there's multiples across the country. Or it'd be a student, for example, KU. I think their second year of their Master's program requires an internship. So it would either be someone that just graduated or is about to graduate and needs an internship to finish their graduate degree. So it'd be bringing someone in to help with a lot of the needs we have to. You know, the county's definitely not overstaffed, so this would be relatively cheap labor for the qualifications they have, and they would have the drive to get things done, give us extra hands on projects, and learn about the operations of city and county government to then maybe find another job that would be open in the city or county or move on to a neighboring community to run those local governments. So wanted to bring this to you. It's something I think would be a great benefit for both the county and city and for students. You know, it'd be open to anyone to apply that meets those qualifications. There's probably five to ten, just because I didn't count, of these programs in the state of Kansas. Cedric County, City of Wichita, I think Saline County, Johnson County, are some of the communities that do have this. I think Goddard used to have one. But there's multiple cities or counties that have similar programs to help students that just get out of grad school, but also helps the community. We have a lot of projects going on in the next year, just thinking of them that they could help with. Fire consolidation, fire stations, EMS stations, health department renovations, economic developments, countywide strategic plan, various things, and then learning the day-to-day operations of the county and then the city. My thought is the city and county would jointly hire this person. They would work for the county. The city would reimburse us, but then they would have, whoever's chosen would have a rotation. Maybe it's monthly or every two months, going back and forth between city and county and departments within both the county and the city. So I think this would be a great benefit for the county and for students.
So what are we doing today? Are you asking for a yes or no?
I'm asking for authorization to create this program. That we have the money, and I will shuffle some money in the general fund to cover it. It won't cause any budget impacts because we do have extra money budgeted for extra positions if needed. This would, because it starts in June, it's only six months this year. And then for the twenty-sixth budget, we'd then adjust to accurately show that. So have a very minor impact on the budget for this year. It's already budgeted, something like this is budgeted. But yes, I would like, I'm asking for authorization to create this. The two human resource directors, city and county, would work together on the job description, and we would get it posted by the end of this month and have someone hired in June, if you guys authorize me to move forward with this.
Okay, I heard the figure forty-five thousand. That's our half?
No.
Or total?
That's total before benefits. Now, there's taxes that, that's the wage. Forty, forty-five thousand is the wage, plus then you pay Social Security, FICA, unemployment taxes. But that would be the total cost, and then the city would reimburse us fifty percent.
So.
But then we only have six months.
We're talking about thirty thousand for our share?
Twenty-five, thirty, for a full year, but not in twenty-twenty-five because they wouldn't be hired till June. So June through December, it would even be half of that. So, yes. But yeah, overall, in a twelve-month period, it'd be about, our share would probably be about twenty-five, thirty thousand.
No, I don't have a question. Anybody have a question?
This would be kind of, a job title would be close to assistant, county manager or county administrator or assistant to you?
Well, the title would be an internship or a fellowship, but job duties would have similar, working with kind of like an assistant, administrative assistant, someone that doesn't have the, I guess, responsibilities of the, as the administrator, but would be doing some of the same work, if that makes sense. Not the supervisory roles and the leadership, same leadership roles, but some functions of it, yes. It'd be somewhat similar to an assistant or assistant to, but it's actually an internship.
Where would you house him, him or her?
So it would go back and forth between city and county. But for the county's portion, there's an office up on the second floor. So where Commissioner Hurst uses an officer across the hall from him, there's a vacant office, that's where I would put them.
How, where? Okay, okay.
And you would be directly over this person?
Yes, under this program, they would report. I would be the one that would be considered their boss, even though, again, it's a joint partnership with the city. So on the city side, it would, they'd be working with Enrico or whoever he designated. But overall, they would, yeah, be under my supervision.
Anything else? To entertain a motion, if you so desire?
I'll motion that we move forward with the internship as presented by Randy Partington.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion before we vote?
Are you training your replacement? I'm just kidding.
I hope not.
Yeah, I don't want you to do, I don't want you to do that.
Cindy Roelcall, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to Item Nine. Nine A is monthly department reports, and I think you're up, Randy.
Okay, in the packet are the monthly reports for the Appraiser, Communications, Facilities, Health Department, Human Resources, Information Technology, and the Treasurer. And for the new commissioners, those are in every packet. You know, every packet, you're going to see a group of department reports. Are there any questions on anything that was in the reports that you want me to look into or answer?
Any problems with any of that? So at this point, I'd say we're ready to go to the financial reports.
Financial report, and this is through December thirty-first. This isn't the final twenty-twenty-four numbers. There are still transfers that will take place. But this is, again, another chance for you guys to kind of see how all of our finances, high-level look at the finances ended the year. There have been some adjustments, thirteenth month, but there are still thirteen-month bills that are coming in. What we, for the thirteenth month, those are bills that we get after the end of December thirty-first, but they were for products or services that took place or were ordered in the previous year. So there are still a few expenditures. Payroll, I think, is done in this as you go through. So you can see most departments, revenue's great, brought in more than we budgeted. Expenditures, you're going to, you see that almost everyone spent pretty much most of their budget. I point this out also as we begin the twenty-twenty-six budget creation that we've, with contractuals, commodities that we've put in here, you can see that we spend most of what we have because we've cut out most of the extra cushion in departments. So you'll see that this year, I would say, more than previous years, departments have spent most of their budget on contractuals and commodities, and that's because costs have gone up, and we've kept, over the past few years, cut those costs from the budget. So there's not a lot of cushion to cut as we begin with the next year. But almost all the departments did come in under budget, which is great. General Fund, if one department goes over, another department comes under. It protects us so we don't have a budget violation. So the General Fund, sorry, scrolled pretty quick. I will say, let me see, going, there are transfers out to other funds. There are still some transfers, again, that will take place to move into our Capital Improvement Reserve, Special Equipment Reserve, and Public Health Outlay Fund, which is a reserve that have not taken place yet. Those still, during the audit process, will take place. So the General Fund, at this point in time, sorry, scrolls. We, as you see, revenues were above expenditures by almost three million dollars, but we still have some transfers that will take place. So our ending fund balance at that point was seventeen-point-nine million. That will be cut a little bit by transfers we make to our reserve funds. But we are in pretty good shape with the General Fund right now. Then the other funds, Aging. The transfer took place after this was reported, so this four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, that's budgeted, has taken place now, so. And that's a revenue. So that's from the General Fund to Aging and Transit, so. And then there's some money moved from, as Candace kind of talked, from Aging to the public transportation. It's just one fund, two different departments, so money's switched in there. So the cash balance here is a little bit better than what it shows because money from the General Fund has been moved. I think that took place last, this week, it's taking place this week. Public Health, it's in good shape at this point. Again, it's beginning and ending fund balance, very little difference. But it also doesn't have the year-end transfer to the Public Health Capital Outlay, which will probably be a couple hundred thousand dollars. Noxious Weed, it's in good shape. Kind of go through this quick. If there's something you want to look at, let me know, and I'll slow down. Special Bridge, this negative is an encumbrance that was put back in. Previous expenditure. So the Special Bridge Fund is in good shape right now. Ending balance, two-point-four million. Road and Bridge, again, this one doesn't have all the transfers completed, but it's another fund that's in really good shape. Solid Waste is in good shape. Youth Services, this probably is most of this one. All of its transfers have taken place, so this is pretty close to what it will end up at, other than a few month, thirteen expenditures. And Solid Waste post-closure, this is what we have to build for, by statute, we have to have this fund for when the landfill closes to be able to still continue to close and pay for operational costs for thirty years post-closure. Employee Benefits Fund, this one has gone down. This is probably the fund, especially as we get into the twenty-twenty-six budget, that I'll be the most concerned about because we've been cutting and being very careful with the health insurance transfer, which is part of this transfer out to other funds. That's health insurance cost, goes into our self-insurance fund. But we cut that number, and we've cut the reserve for cash carryover. So that fund is going down in cash balance more than, the other ones are staying steady. Employee Benefits is probably going down in cash balance more than, the other ones are staying steady. Employee benefits is probably going down. And then the outside agency funds, partner agency funds, special parks and recreation. We didn't, we haven't put any expenditures on this. This can be used, we, this is part of the liquor tax. There's a portion that goes by statute to special parks and recreation. And in the past, the county had given ten thousand, I think it was ten thousand dollars or a certain amount to the Hutch Rec Commission because monies in this fund have to be spent on sports or recreation. That can be spent anywhere in the county, any agency, but it's been a while, a couple of years since we've spent any money, so. So that fund is going up in balance and it's at fifty-three thousand. We can talk about that in the twenty-six budget if you guys want to open it up to agencies in the county that provide recreation. We can look at that. Special alcohol, again, liquor tax, that's for diversion court or the drug court. And bond and interest, that's our bonds. It's in good shape. We did get some. The other revenue was the tax credits for work on the courthouse. Since some of this bond is paying for courthouse, the roof project and the exterior, when we sold the tax credits, a portion of it went back into this fund. Some went into the general fund, some went into the bond and interest.
Can I back, have you back up to the parks and recreation?
Sure.
Now, the parks and recreation fund has to go to county. In other words, I will just add, if, if a, if a small town has a small project that they want to do.
The county.
It has to stay in the county rather than a city government, an incorporated area.
The county receives money, the city of Hutchinson also receives money, and they have their own special parks and recreation. I believe all the other cities, they don't qualify. They may get a small percentage, but they, I don't think they have the size to get this, so it's the county. The county can put out bids or propose, ask for proposals and can give the money to other cities if they have parks and recreation programs, but it's the county's money.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then noxious weed, capital, these are capital outlays, public health capital outlay. Um, you can see building that up. That will help pay for renovations at the health department when, when the EMS moves out. And then historical museums, special equipment, that one has gone down, somewhat concerned. And then special road, we stopped levying taxes on this one, but we're still kind of receiving some kind of leftover. It takes a few years before that tax will stop receiving money. If we have a road project, that you have a special project, the county can start levying taxes on, on special road again, road fund. Statue, I think, the way that I read it, it's for, this levy of, tax levy is for projects in a limited time. So that's why we stopped doing it, is we didn't have a road project that was identified for the special road fund. But if in the future, there's a special road that you want to work on, we need to work on, that needs more money than what Road and Bridge has in their budget, this would be a fund to use to start levying taxes with this. But it has a ending balance of just over a million dollars right now. And then the CIP fund and internal services fund, handling municipalities fight, fight addiction. Any questions on the finances? I know that was a lot, but if there's any questions, just, you can also can individually reach out to me and I'll go over this in more detail if you want.
Not hearing any, uh, are we done with the report then, or you got something more?
Um, I do, so I wanted to, um, next week is the fifth Wednesday, and so sometimes we have, uh, business meetings. My recommendation to the commission is that we have a study session, work session next week and discuss the landfill and landfill fees and possibly strategic plans for, as commissioners, for twenty twenty-five. So that is my recommendation, and if you guys are okay, give consent. We'll prepare a, an agenda for next week that's a study or work session. Want to be televised, but it's where we would bring Megan, landfill people in here and have a discussion about what was brought up, I believe at the last commission meeting about landfill fees and how to assess those fees and what amount, so. To have a thorough discussion next week would be my recommendation, if you guys are okay with having that meeting.
You need a vote, a consensus? What do you need, Randy?
Just consensus, and then we'll.
What's the consensus, guys? I'm good.
Yes, same time, yeah.
So that takes care of that, or you got more?
The only other thing is, I'm, in working with the city of Hutchinson, we're looking at a, a joint meeting, joint governing body meeting for February fourth, after city council meeting. So it'd be evening, in the evening after there. They would have a rel, hopefully a relatively short meeting. I'll get more details and agenda. But I wanted to give you the head, a heads up to start looking at your calendars for.
And you're saying February fourth?
Yes, Tuesday, February fourth in the evening. I'll get a more accurate time and, and agenda a little bit closer.
So you'll notify us, but I'll.
Yeah, I'll give you more information, but if you could get that on your calendar for probably, I'm just guessing, six, six-thirty. I think their meetings start at five-thirty, so if it lasts half hour, hour meeting, then we would go into a studies, worked, or a joint governing body meeting over at the city.
Anything else?
Nope.
County commission reports. They usually start at one end or the other, but I think I'm just going to go like this and then like this. Randy, anything you, you have?
Go ahead. Yeah, I got some calls concerning the building of the, uh, continue to get some calls concerning Randy on the, the fire station in, in Nickerson, one of them. Some concerns from public about there's buried tanks in the old building. We need to make sure we're aware of that and what we need to mitigate that in case we got to take those out. I, I just want to comment, I think the bid process on that particular thing, we, we need to rethink in the future, not do it the way we'd done that one. I've discussed that with Randy in the past, that I think we, I don't want this to sound wrong. We had some people that were very inexperienced in that area that tried to put a bid together that was a, not failed necessarily, but very unclear to those that bid on it. Um, it wasn't detailed enough. I, I hate it when we talk about taking somebody and spending twenty, thirty thousand dollars to discover a building. I don't think that's necessary. There's companies out there that offer post-prime buildings that'll do the complete design, so at least you got a basis and, and details to bid on. And I think in the future, if we're going to do that, that would be something we'll look at. I've, I talked to one of the companies that would have came in on bid, had they had a detail, I guarantee you, they would have been on or below bid with that because that's what they do, that particular kind of a building. And I would, I would love to see that rebid. I don't know if there's a way to do that and, and do it with some detail, just to see how it could come out. We're looking like a hundred thousand over that, what, what we had put money in there for. And, and that, that particular company that I'm talking about bid two fire stations in Salina at a million two, that are a lot more exotic than what we're building, and so that tells you that they were five hundred and some thousands apiece on those up there. And trust me, it'll be more costly to build up there than it would in the county. And so I know that it could have come in on bid if we, if we would, if we would do that. I don't know that we can back up without causing problems, but that's, that's my question and my comments.
Commissioner, um, two o'clock today, the public building commission meets to discuss the fire stations, the bids. If it's approved today, the low bid, then it would be too late, but there still would be a chance. If the public building commission wants to put it out and move it and redo it, we would have to hurry.
I would love to see that happen because, one, we wanted to see it come into that price range, and I, and I think it is possible to do that. And knowing what we spent outside, I realized it's going to have another stall compared to what we had in some others. But I, I just think we can get it for the price if we, if we do that. I don't want to be unfair to the one that bid on that and got the bid, but I think it's fair to the public, uh, to try to get the best deal that we can.
Yeah.
If that's possible, I'd like to look at that.
The public building commission meets at two o'clock today in this room, so whatever, they're the ones that will be making that decision.
Are you going to be the voice in that for me?
I will let them know that a commissioner is concerned about, yeah, I will let them know your comments. Obviously, there's five commissioners too, so.
That's, I just appreciate that, thank you.
The, and the low bidder would have the chance to rebid, wouldn't he?
Yes, they would throw out the whole process, I mean, the whole process would start over with specs. I don't know if we would need to pay an engineer or what to do with the, to redo the specs.
Well, I mean, if we paid twenty, thirty thousand dollars to engineer it to have a print and we're on price, I mean, we're still saving a hundred thousand dollars, so.
The only concern I have, and I don't, and Patrick may know better than I do, with the bond, since we already have the bonds for this project, the amount of time it takes, we're going to, we would have to hurry to still get this going.
Right.
I don't.
I think we have, I think we could have time, but we do have bond payments that will happen whether we've completed the project or not.
This year, the payments start this year.
I, I, I just think, I think from our perspective as the county, you know, we always agonize over paying architecture fees or design fees, and it always feels a little bit like a lot, but then what you, what you get for that money is a bid process that's, that's very apples to apples. And I think as you guys go forward with the kind of a new group of commissioners, that's the kind of decision we'll have to make every time going forward. Probably been decades since we looked at building a new fire station, or at least it'd been a while, so we all, we all, all the people involved in putting the bid out really, we, we were expecting different bids and that we thought we'd communicated well, and, and maybe we just hadn't communicated as well as we thought we had.
Would the specifications change any? I mean, from, from what was engineered first?
Well, there was like a one sheet, and it didn't detail a lot of the things that they wanted in it. That was my complaint.
There were details, I don't think it would really change. That probably wouldn't change. It just may be in a different format. And I don't know if that would give the bidders a.
I don't think the detail, I don't think the, I don't, we'd still want the same building, but the idea, the question would be, if we communicated it differently, would different people feel comfortable bidding on it? Because apparently, anecdotally, some of the people who usually bid on these things were confused or weren't clear with what we were asking for a bid on, is, is what we're kind of hearing. But what we'd actually want wouldn't change. We wouldn't want a bigger or a different building. We'd just communicate what we're looking for.
And the department that worked on that had talked with a company, and that's where they got some of the specification, some of the information and the estimated cost. That company didn't bid. My understanding is they couldn't find subcontractors, and so they didn't bid.
All right, I'm done stirring up trouble.
No, I mean, we are dealing with the people's money and, and I mean, we ought to rethink, even if we go forward, we, at least for the future, because as Randy pointed out, this is the first new building type deal we've done in a long time, and, and none of us were around, and, and, but anyway, Ron, any comments from you?
I'll, not much, I'm just first day, so, um, but I did, I did get a, um, a call about trying to get a burn permit on how difficult that is. Um, um, I, I got one years ago. I, I didn't remember it being that difficult, but, it was put to me like it was extremely hard, and by the time I got done, it's too late to burn anyway, so.
You, you're not talking about the original permit?
No.
It's the day of?
No, no, the original, the, the original.
Oh. Because if that's, that's set up with, ahead of time.
Yeah, right.
But I've heard comments both ways, they can't burn on the day, even if they've done the paperwork previously, what they call in, so. Anything else, Ron?
I said I was going to go both ways. Uh, Rod, you got something?
I agree with Randy. I think we needed a little more.
Oh, thanks, now it's going to snow. I said you agreed with me, thanks, now it's going to snow. I'm just kidding.
I thought about you the other day with that zero degrees too. Last night, we had a really, I think, successful town hall meeting out at Sylvia, and this came about from a, a meeting we had at the Fairfield School a few weeks ago in the Love Where You Live program that the Hutch Community Foundation is working on, and Saunders was there to take some pictures. And we had, uh, uh, thirty-five community members there. And, uh, I want to thank Tom Stanton, the DA. I want to thank Sheriff Campbell, Captain Lutz, Captain McClay, and Under Sheriff Sean for being there. And so there was a total of forty, forty-two altogether. And, uh, uh, I, I really appreciate that. We had a good conversation. Kept it on, on peak. We got started on time and about five minutes over when we finished. And so, uh, uh, there's been a couple of people ask about if there was any need to do this in other areas of the county. And a good conversation afterwards. Got some things that, that really came up that we don't have control on, and I think that was the, uh, one of the essence was it is procedures and the, and the way you go about to, uh, not only be able to find a criminal, but, but, uh, someone is doing an act wrong, but also, uh, what, how it's handled through the judges, and that was a pretty wide, high opening to a lot of people too, so. Of course, this Friday, this Thursday and Friday is the county leadership program, and it will be offered one more time, so if you can get there, be a good idea to go. The main thing I want to talk about is pretty soon, the planning and zoning will be finishing up their regulations on solar. And from then on, this commission will be saddled with developing a decommissioning and a development agreement. And before any potential project can even go forward and talk about, as far as we're concerned, the commission is concerned, that decommissioning and development agreement will have to be written up by this commission. And, uh, which is, which is a change from the way it had been. And I think it's a real positive exchange, uh, uh, change. So I think it behooves all of us to do a lot of studying on this. So we're prepared to make sure we have enough knowledge of solar development in order to establish that proper development agreement and, and, because we're going to have to, together, come up with that. And, uh, so that we protect our county's assets, the soil, the water, the revenues, and its citizens. And it's going to require some pretty good studying on each and one of our parts. So that we're pretty knowledgeable, and I think we need to think about starting now on this in, in your spare time. And not just, not just base it upon listening to others. Because there's things that you're going to run into that you got to really question when you start looking at this, at, at the positives and negatives of having solar within the county. And I think, not this study session, but at some point in time, I think we're going to have to schedule a study session on this. Maybe more than one, probably. But anyway, with that change in the way the planning and zoning has, has made this, uh, a, a potential solar project possible, then, then we will, we will need to get this decommissioning and development agreement set up ahead of time, so that if one does come in, not that it will, but does come in.
If I just might talk about that a little bit. So the procedure and the, I think we're headed on, and, and this is fairly common, I think, for other counties is, so planning and zoning will have rules. You guys will, if you approve them or as, as you guys make them, and they are general and they are countywide or wherever you guys place them, and they are, have set back. And they are, have setbacks and, and, you know, very general parameters, but good parameters so that developers can say, okay, this is, these are the rules for the road for Reno County. But then when they come for a permit for a, a project specific permit, then there'll be a project specific development agreement and decommissioning agreement. And often one prop, one part of that sometimes is the county having the developer fund, paying for our own engineer to review the project. But because it's project specific, you're talking about then, you know exactly the location and you know exactly the proposed equipment. And so you can really get a little bit more drilled down. That development agreement, of course, is something we negotiate in good faith because.
No, it's not negotiated.
Well, it's.
It can, we can ask for input.
Yeah, that, okay, that's, I mean, it's not, it's our agreement with the developer that allows them to do what they want to do if we do it. But I guess my point is, whether, my point being, the, when we're making the guy, when we're making the regulations, make them as if you expect that something would get built that way. Because once we say, the development agreement is not the time to, the, the development agreement is designed to make a project happen in a safe way. Okay? It's, if you don't want a project to happen in certain areas, then you need to get that at the regulation level. If you want deeper setbacks, that should be at the regulation level. But the development agreement is the county doing its due diligence to make sure what gets permitted is appropriate and safe. And it does hold there, it has the company, has obligations then very specific to where they're putting things. So when you guys set the regulations, if you set regulations that allow solar development, you should be prepared for people to ask for a permit to develop for solar. Is all I'm trying to say.
What it was explaining to me is that the planning and zoning commissions can say, okay, this locale is all right. But what happens in that locale and what protects everything, it comes in the development agreement. And then the decommissioning can be part of that or it can be separate. But it's, it's, it's how they're, how that property is handled after the project is over with. Or it's.
It'll longer function.
Yeah, I agree. And, and, and you can get more specific on the decommissioning because now you're talking not just in general terms about solar, but you're saying, this is where they want to put this item. And so, so then you can say, okay, well, if you're, if, when we approve you to put that there, this is how we're going to decommission it. So when you're, you, you can just be more specific when you know exactly what's being proposed than you can when you're making regulations that are countywide. It's like saying, we allow single-family residents in this area versus when you do a building permit that says, this is where we want to put it. Then you can, you can dig in a little bit more deeply when you have a specific project, is all I'm trying to say. So we're kind of saying the same things.
Same thing. One may just be a little more involved than the other one, okay? That's all.
Richard, you got anything you want to say or add?
Well, I'd like to say thank you to Randy for allowing me to, to follow him around and get orientated to the county and how things work in all the departments. I also had a compliment for you. We, we lost a member in the county in an accident and you took time to text or email, I think, everybody in the county to let them know before it hit the news media. And so that means a lot to the, to the employees, I, I know for a fact. So I just wanted to pass that on to you also. Thank you, sir.
Well, Ron didn't touch on it, so I will. He and I both attended the conservation meeting over here at the Nature Center the other week. What was that, a week ago, 10 days ago? But anyway, they were grateful that they had some people from the commission there. Wish they'd get to meet the rest of you and visit with you a little stronger. Something that came out of that meeting that may or may not affect what we want to do in budget in future years is there may or may not be legislation passed to where they would make Kansas grants to the counties for conservation things. Mostly, if I understood it right, right now, a lot of it's toward ag. They put $7 million into Reno County a year is what it figures up, is what they told us. But these Kansas grants, in our current budget, if I think right, we've got about $25,000. Law says we have to put some money into that. Doesn't say exactly how much. But there are matching grants and now state grants are 25,000. And they are able to get the total amount of matching grants from the, the state. However, the state is talking about changing the law a little bit and doubling that in the future. If we don't change ours, they're still at the 20, at whatever we put in is what the state will match. So that may be a conversation if and when, and what, what our legislature passes, but it's something they brought up. And it's kind of some of those things they like to show what's being done with the dollars that are, that are being spent by us now and, and in these grants and, and interesting meetings. It's ever-changing, how the universities and their studies change agriculture and, and our practices. But if I understood right, the extra uptick would be more in the line of recreation like at the parks and places like that. So it'd be about a 50/50 max. You know, everybody's always wondering where those dollars go. Other than that, I'd like to thank you guys for your confidence today. And hopefully I'll live up to what, what's expected. And if I don't, or I make a mistake, please slow me down. Let me know. We'd rather do it right. And, you know, we all, in the moment, make our mistakes. If you see me making one, Patrick, keep me out of tr, keep us out of trouble. But that's mostly what I want to say is thank you guys for your confidence and, and always feel free if something's going on and I skip or I do something, slow me down, let me know. It's better that way than to go on and have a mistake. With that, is there anything else anybody has? I'd say that takes care of number 10. And who, who wants to adjourn this thing? Meeting adjourned.